Hello, I'm Sochi Limora. Welcome to your McAllen Minutes. If you missed the McAllen City Commission meeting of April 28th, don't worry. Here's a brief recap of what was discussed. McAllen Mayor Javier Villalobos called the McAllen City Commission meeting to order, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, District One Commissioner Tony Aguirre gave the invocation. The McAllen City Commission meeting began with a proclamation read by District Six Commissioner Pepe Cabeza de Vaca, who was joined by awesomely authentic founders Lizbeth and Carlos Murriel and their children to proclaim the day "Awesomely Authentic Day." Awesomely Authentic is the first-of-its-kind nonprofit organization here in the Rio Grande Valley that fundraises and sells merchandise to benefit the autism community by giving scholarships to local families who have individuals who are on the spectrum. Lizbeth has a five-year-
And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
And good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's joint city commission meeting. We'll-
Call the meeting to order.
We'll call the meeting to order, and it's a joint.
Mr. Williams?
We have four.
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Commissioner Joaquin Zamora.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could take a moment of silence, our heads. Heavenly Father, we welcome our newest and returning council members to your Board of Commissioners. We thank you for the commitment of these Commissioners and Board and city staff to serving our community of McAllen. May you always grant us wisdom, discernment, and integrity as they fulfill their duties in their everyday-to-day work. Help them to work together in unity and effectiveness, always seeking the best for our city. May their decisions reflect your will and bring positive change to our community. On behalf of our deeply departed and wonderful Assistant City Manager Joe Vera, we just please take a moment of silence as we reflect on his impact and his love for our communities of Hidalgo and the city of McAllen. Thank you.
Amen.
The first item on the agenda for you this evening is the official canvas of the contested election returns for the general election held in McAllen on May 3rd, 2025. Those results have been provided to you.
What do we have in District One? Tony Aguirre, 950 votes. Tim Wilkins, 494 votes. Mr. Aguirre is declared to win.
980 votes. 980 votes. For the record.
For the record, 980. Okay. District Three, we had 500, uh, Rodri Rios, 501 votes. Omar Commissioner Mark Quintanilla, 370. Mr. Rios is declared to winner. Congratulations.
Do we need a motion on that? A motion from, yeah, Mayor, you don't need a motion from the City Commission.
Motion to approve. Mr. Mayor, Chairman for the Public Utility Board, if we could just take one brief moment, I've asked, if I could ask the city manager just to provide a brief synopsis of some of the concerns that were raised during the recent city election, if we could just take a few moments to do that, or at the most appropriate time, as you believe, Mayor.
We can do it a little bit after.
Very well, thank you, sir.
Excellent. Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Let's have the PUB act on this.
Chairman, I have some move to accept the results.
Got a motion to accept? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say a vote of say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Okay, now I need a motion to adopt, the adoption of an ordinance certifying the official election returns.
Mayor, before you make a motion, Commissioner, if I could just include that we did have three elections, four elections that were uncontested. Mayor-at-large was an unopposed election. Single-member district number two, Joaquin J.J. Zamora, was an unopposed candidate for that position. And on the McAllen Public Utility Board trustee place A, Charles Amis, was an unopposed candidate for election to that place. And McAllen Board member place D, Ernie Williams, was the unopposed candidate for that election. And so, in addition to the canvas that the Commission and Public Utility Board just conducted, the ordinance will include declaration of those candidates as the unopposed winners of those races.
Excellent. Your motion to approve.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve from the Public Utility.
So moved. Second.
All approved? All approve?
Aye.
Say aye. Motion carries.
Excellent. And I do believe that's all the business that we have at a joint meeting.
Mayor, we have swearing-in ceremonies for the newly-elected officials, and then we can adjourn this meeting.
Excellent. Who goes first?
Mayor.
A mayor?
So you continue your duties.
We have two microphones right there for you, Mayor.
Can I say a few words?
Absolutely.
Just 30 seconds. So it would always be an honor to swear in my friend Javier Villalobos, but this, um, this time is really special because it was, I don't know if he remembers, and it kind of dates us, but this year is 30 years that we were both sworn in as young lawyers. And what makes it more special was the two of us were sworn in in my current court chambers, which is the 13th Court of Appeals. So everything came full circle. Now, I can't believe that, I wouldn't have believed back then that the two of us would be in this position we are today, but a lot of hard work got us here, so congratulations. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Javier Villalobos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of City of McAllen Mayor.
Of the office of City of McAllen Mayor.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much for giving me, once again, y'all for giving me, and actually having the faith and confidence and me to serve you as your mayor. And when I mean serve, I mean it, because we have a commission here at just in right at serve, and they serve the right way with honor and integrity. We no longer have one Commissar, because they had a service pretty well, and we thank them, but we now have another Commissioner, Mr. Rios, that we've only talked about how we do things here in McAllen. And how do we do it? We do it in the McAllen way, with honor, with integrity, and we do what is right. Commission, mighty our commission, when they come here, they are ready, they are prepared, it takes us both of them, let them now finish our meeting. That is the way McAllen does it. We cannot get to do after discussion, we cannot get involved in procurement, we cannot get involved in personnel, we hire good people, and we let them work. That is the McAllen way. Thank you for affording me another opportunity to serve as your mayor. Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioner Tony Aguirre.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, if you'd raise your right hand.
Keep doing it, girl.
I state your name.
Aye, Antonio Aguirre Jr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, District One.
Of City Commissioner of the, of City of McAllen, District One.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Wow. Thank you all for being here. Everyone, the opportunities I have to do this, is that we should do it here. I mean, did you take the time, care about?
Living in a great city, care about who is here representing you?
Representing this whole city. I am the District One. Commissioner, the, of the South McAllen, Middle McAllen, West McAllen, and East McAllen. And I knew this was going to happen, but I said something. I, 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 I'm a teenager anyway.
I do.
I, my name is Antonio Aguirre Jr., and I'm two. And, uh, I lost my dad seven years ago, and he loved me, absolutely loved me. But later here, he was just watching me driving around, a little way he's in here probably, but he, because he said, you know, when he says that, yours will be, you know, and he, they, I want, he's in a different, he said, like, 1964, we're on our way, we want to get laid from Allen, and we were thinking we were going to move back to, from there. And Dr. Parker Park in McAllen, he didn't know what my dad was doing, and he was going to start their life, and he knew there was an opening, the, he went to the, from the outset, and he knew there was an opening, he, he, he called, the owner of the, Mr. Parker, Mr. Parker, and he called, and he said, he's there, he's only there, he's eight years in McAllen, that's big there. Today, goes home for March, the birthday of my mom. My mom was a good nine years old, she was about two years old. And, uh, he seems a lot, he leans up, and, uh, my, my three kids, living in the city, my two grandkids, I haven't do anything that's a personal, I mean, I won't do anything that would hurt them. And, uh, your, your, to be your servant, I apologize to that, I'm a servant, I'm a servant, I'm a servant, I will give you my cell number any time you need. You're a wunko, I appreciate that, all my friends, my family, that worked real hard to be elected in this campaign, because you gotta go through it. You gotta go through a campaign, learn, come and serve, and it's part of the process. So, but it's worth it. I share with some of the best people, my P O B family, twenty seven years, I served with the P O B, and I love that, and I know the infrastructure that is needed to take care of this growing community. It's not perfect, but guess what? We're here because we love it and because we know that, that we give it all our best. Muchas gracias, que Dios los bendiga todos, y viva McAllen.
Next, we have Commissioner J.J. Zamora.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Joaquin Javier Zamora.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
The, the office of.
City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, District Two.
City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, District Two.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for being here to join us in this very special occasion for all our Board Commissioners, those returning and newly-elected. I'm grateful to the Lord, our God, first of all, to give thanks to him for giving me the opportunity of life to serve you, the citizens of our great city of McAllen, but I can't obviously do it alone. I'd like to thank my church family from our Lady Perpetual Help here in McAllen, Calvary Baptist Church here in McAllen, as well as Holy Spirit Church in McAllen. Obviously, I couldn't decide which one, right? So I said them all three. Public service is something that's deep in my heart, you know, and it's because I asked all my family to be here with me when I took this oath, because there is no I in team. It's all about teamwork. It's all about working together, collaborating, coming together, yes, identifying some of the problems and challenges that we have in our community, but more importantly, that through collaboration and community caretaking, we are also problem solvers. We try to solve the problems of poverty, homelessness, food insecurity, housing, all these things that we sometimes take for granted, but for the person out there on the other side of the street or the bus station at the Catholic Charities, oh, they got his food. They might get a warm shower, and maybe they have some new clothing. So we're blessed as a community to live in where we are, to enjoy the many things that we do, whether it be on a nice Sunday hike and bike walk in one of our parks, enjoy our swimming facilities, or certainly our stellar performing arts center, and certainly one of our events that we just had this weekend at Mexlon. That's what makes McAllen so special for us and for my family. And I'm especially blessed to have a wife, Elizabeth, and a daughter, Emily, and a future son-in-law to be here present, because it's their daily support that makes me continue and want to work and continue serving for you. To say it's been easy these last six months would be a lie. There are two very special persons in my life that are missing right now, and I wish they were physically here, but I know that they're in the Lord, with the Lord's presence above to see my dad, who passed away in June of 2000, and my mom, who passed away in November of last year. I certainly hope that I made you proud, Mom and Dad, because I do my very, very best. I certainly hope that I made you proud, Mom and Dad, because I do my very, very best. And I thank you again to all of you who believe in what the McAllen way is. Right Mayor? The McAllen way, because that's how we do things in McAllen. With a spirit of optimism, joy, and always with a smile, because that's our community. Thank you very much. And next we have our newest Commissioner, Rolando Rolli Rios.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, please raise your right hand. I, and state your name.
I, Rolando Javier Rios.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
The duties that the office of
The duties of the office of
City Commissioner of the City of McAllen District Three
City Commissioner of the City of McAllen District Three
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability
Preserve
Preserve
Protect
Protect
And defend the Constitution
And defend the Constitution
And the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States
And of this state
And of this state
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations Commissioner.
Good evening everyone, and thank you for being here. First, I want to sincerely thank Commissioner Mark Quintanilla for his dedicated service to our city and District Three. His work has laid a foundation that we will continue to build upon. To the voters of District Three, thank you. Thank you for your trust, your voice, and your belief in a better future. I am honored to serve you. Now is the time to come together, to move forward as one community, set aside differences, and focus on what truly matters: the people of McAllen. I'm committed to working hard with my fellow commissioners, our mayor, and our city manager, to deliver the results I promised. You can count on open communication, transparency, and action. Most importantly, I will work every day to strengthen our neighborhoods, support economic growth, and improve the quality of life for every resident, not just in District Three, but all across of McAllen. Together, we will make a difference. Thank you for your support. Thank you for being here. And this victory goes out to my parents, Norberto Rios and Elia Rios, Dr. Cos Nuevo León. And also, I would like to thank all my friends that are here. This might be something a little bit different, but I would like for all my friends that helped me out to get here to please stand and be recognized. It does take a lot of team effort. And one person that I really want to thank is my wife. My wife was with me every single day. And of course, God forgive me the discernment and the clarity to decide to run. It was a very tough decision, but through discernment, I was able to make a commitment to run. And I would door knock many, many neighborhoods, and I would listen to their concerns, and that strengthened my belief to even run harder for you. So once again, thank you to the voters of McAllen, Texas. I will not let you down. I'm going to work real hard for you and the rest of McAllen as well. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Rios. Get your seat. And next we have Ernie Williams. Oh, Ernie.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I
Ernie Williams
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
Of McAllen Public Utility Board Place D
McAllen Public Utility Board Place D
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability
Preserve
Preserve
Protect
Protect
And defend
And defend
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
And of this state
And of this state
So help me God
So help me God.
If Tony's going to say something, and J.J.'s going to say something, and the new commissioner's going to say something, I gotta say something. To put it all in perspective, Tony was at Zavala Elementary School when my wife Ann was teaching over there at Zavala Elementary School. Just to put it in perspective. And I've been going to Zemores for a long time, too. And since we're going to get kind of personal, my wife Ann, my daughter-in-law Karen, there's a lot of Catholics in here, I think. My son, has a son.
Here, my son can make it.
This is my grand boy. He goes to Notre Dame. He's a sophomore, he's a sophomore in Notre Dame, finishing up his sophomore year at Notre Dame. And I'm not Catholic, and that's just because I wasn't born Catholic. I had to go to the Presbyterian Church. I went to the Baptist Church. But anyway, but I did go visit Notre Dame. And I told him after I visited, and the way I was treated, and the way the tradition and everything, when I come back, I'm going to become a fast-track Catholic. But anyway. I haven't, I haven't done that yet, Jeff, and I was really serious about that. But anyway. On a serious note, the utility is in good shape. Your water, wastewater, we're led by our manager, Mark Vega, who is setting up at the table there, and a whole cadre of management team that knows what they're doing, all the way down to the entry-level employees. Two hundred and forty-plus employees, I think we are now, Mark. And every day, we do a lot of stuff underground. I know that sounds a little suspicious, but we like it that way. There are a few elevated water towers that we have to deal with, but do a lot of work. And we don't get a lot of complaints, and that's the good thing, of these people doing their job, day in and day out. But we do, but we plan for the future. And utility is in good shape financially. We've got the double A, minus on one rating agency, only because of demographics, A-plus, double A-plus on the other. So we practice fiscal responsibility, and above all, we understand fiduciary capacity, what our responsibilities are. We represent the ratepayers, some of which here are ratepayers. We take it serious. We try to squeeze every drop of water out of every dollar. That's a pun on words, Nicole. But anyway, I'm glad to serve. I've been serving for, I'll be going into my sixteenth year now. It takes a long time to get stuff done with utility. That's just a joke. But anyway, I appreciate serving you again for another four years and all that you do for the city. And especially our elected officials, our utility brothers up here, and my commission brothers, thank you for all the support that you give the utility. And thank you, wife Ann.
And the P O B meeting is adjourned, correct, Ernie?
Meeting, uh, need a vote please?
So who?
Second.
P O B meeting is adjourned.
And the City Commission meeting is recess till five.
...
And we're back from recess. We have item number three, oh, actually, item number two. Election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Any comments?
No, right now, the seat for Mayor Pro Tem is vacant. So it would be to the commission to select a mayor pro tem who would serve as mayor in the absence of mayor.
Mayor, it's my pleasure and privilege if I could make the nomination of our commissioner for District Five, Sebastian Sebi Hadad for mayor pro tem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Congratulations.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. So the first three items are, were heard at the April twenty-second P N Z meeting. The first one's a rezoning from C one to C one at sixteen twelve Pecan Boulevard, they're gonna do a coffee shop. The second item is C three L to R one, this is on the twenty-nine hundred Taylor Avenue, this is the south side of Daffodil, they're gonna just, they're subdividing that portion, the portion, and they're gonna do a residential lot. The third item is a city-initiated rezoning from, for Rancho subdivision, it's on Sarah and, between Sarah and Olga, just east of Sam Houston Avenue, or sorry, Sam Houston Elementary, sorry.
That's all of them?
Yes, with the.
Okay, do we have anybody, anyone to speak against any of these items? Anyone to speak against any of these items? If not, do I hear motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
We have item B, conditional use permit.
B, conditional use permit.
So this property is located at eight seventeen Keria Avenue, just east of North Tenth, north of John Quill Avenue. They have been applying for a conditional use permit for a home office for a cleaning service, they started in two thousand nine and renewed in twenty seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, and twenty-five. The applicant stated that they would be doing direct deposits so that the employees won't be picking up the checks at the, at the home. Over the years, we have had opposition stating that they, they park along that curb and creates a side obstruction. One of the conditions of the conditional use permit is they cannot have exterior display and they have a van that's parked in the, along the curb with the name of the business. At the Planning and Zoning Commission of March the fourth, we had two neighbors in opposition because of the side obstruction. The applicant was not present and the board voted to disapprove the item.
Mr. Sotella, have there been any violations for either parking or for display of the sign where they either pay the fine or have had multiple violations?
Not that I'm aware of, sir, just the commissioner, just that, I, just that van that's parked on that.
I had a question about the van, that you mentioned that, you know, I've got a neighbor that's a plumber, his van is covered in his business, I've seen others, lawn service or relatively the same, do we have an ordinance against?
Not necessarily, not necessarily on those, it's just when they have the home occupation, they can advertise it at home. So like when they have the home, either has to be parked in the backyard or in the garage, that's just one of the stipulations for the conditional use permit.
Make a motion to disapprove the request for conditional use permit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, do we have anybody here to speak against any, this item? Do we have anybody speak against item?
Right here, Senator.
Yes, ma'am.
Come forward.
If we could please just have your name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name is Rose Estrada, and the address is eight one seven Keria, and I'm the owner of the company.
Okay, well, so you're the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you tell us about?
Yes, well, I've been, I've been in the business for, since two thousand one, and before, yes, like you say, you know, there were people parking on the site many years back, because I had the employees to come and pick up the checks. But now, since I have a desk payroll, the take care of payroll, we don't have the employees to come to the office anymore, and we do the job is on, on the offices, they go to work at five, and I never, they don't come to the house, they don't have any reason. The supplies, Sinta Supplies, the cleaning equipment, so there's no one to come and pick up equipment.
Am I gonna assure you I get more UPS and, and all those in my house than yours? My wife.
Well.
Is she still here? No, she's not, that's like.
Okay, and, but now, like I said, you know, we, I only have one person, and she comes only on Mondays, which is here by now, her name is Miss Lara, and she comes and she does pay paperwork, maybe four hours, and then she leaves. And I asked my neighbor, David Garcia, to, if it's okay for her to park on the side, and he says yes, so.
The issue is pretty much a van?
Correct, well.
It's just, the van's just in conflict with the permit, right? But if she didn't get the permit, the van could be there.
Correct, and it's just, yeah, the neighbors had stated that there's multiple cars along that curb, so it's one of that area where it kind of curves, so it creates a side obstruction. I tried to, we sent the inspector out there multiple times throughout the day to see what we would get those pictures, what we could and all that we could get with that van.
In other words, also, if you never came for the conditional use permit, we probably never would have known that.
Well, even if the permit's denied, the van's gonna stay there, I assume, right?
I mean, it's, belongs to us.
That's where it belongs, I mean, it's not gonna change the location of the van.
No, it's not, I mean.
And your permit, you're applying, your operation hours are gonna be Monday only?
Monday only, we.
Eight to, eight to, you have eight to ten, but it sounded like eight to twelve?
No, it is right here, if you'd like for her to come to the front, she'll, she'll explain to you what she does. And about the van, yes, you know, it's there, and whenever, I, I mean, I don't even have visitors anymore, my family, I said, don't come, and the employees that wanna come see me, I said, no, because then they get mad at me, so.
I don't see a problem.
I'm not, there's a motion on the table?
Perhaps, but second.
No?
I think, there's a motion, yeah.
Yes, but there's no second.
Yeah.
I think he won.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment, I'm her nephew, I help her also run the company as well too. As for vehicles, good evening, everyone. As for the vehicles being on there, like she said, the only thing that stays there is just a vehicle, and it's only through Monday.
Yeah, but what we're looking at, even if there's no conditional use permit, if the vehicle's there, it's gonna be there regardless.
Legally.
Yes, sir.
I, I would make a motion to approve.
Zero, zero second, and motion to deny? Second motion to deny, dies for lack of a second?
No.
I would make a motion to approve the permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck to you.
Okay, next item. Need a motion to amend the zoning ordinance to the city of McAllen.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consent agenda, we have items A through R. Through R, do we need to pull anything?
Mayor, I would mention that the consent agenda includes approval of two contracts for the airport, one for a terminal checkpoint point expansion, another for a terminal expansion design. The terminal expansion design is in conformity with what was presented to you at the workshop where we discussed that matter. We also have items for the donation of several vehicles to Tamaulipas, Reynosa, Mexico, grant funding allocation for the twenty-four twenty-five fiscal year with Tech dot, purchase of a threat detector, ten police package vehicles, consideration to declare certain equipment as surplus, purchase of six new vehicles through tips cooperative pricing for the police department as well.
That's excellent. Any questions? If not, I hear motion to approve.
So move. H R.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
And I just abstained from item four R one-one, one of the tax refunds.
Thank you. We have items five, excuse me. Participation agreement, that's a one-third, or what is it?
Item five A is consideration approval of development participation agreement for public infrastructure at Northwood Trails subdivision, block two and three. As part of the subdivision process, Red Rock Real Estate Group is required to complete a portion of the public improvement on Freddie Gonzalez. We've asked them to install a roundabout that we have programmed for thirty thirty-three and Freddie. As part of that roundabout, the city, the engineer has asked us, Quintanilla Headley, to participate with half of that improvement and enter into a participation agreement with, for the full intersection. Staff has reviewed the proposed construction estimate and determined that the participation amount of two hundred and three thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and eleven cents, or thirty percent less, thirty percent or less of the total construction cost is reasonable. Staff recommends approval of this request, and we open it up for any questions.
Excellent, any questions?
On the improvement, does Northwood Trails own the northern half of that roundabout?
They, they, it'll be dedicated to us the right away, as part of the development process.
Okay, but right now, they own fifty percent?
Yes, they own the property.
But they're only gonna be responsible for thirty percent of the project cost?
We can participate with up to thirty percent of the, of the cost, when we take the total public improvement, it's way, the two hundred and three is less. They're putting in about a million dollars worth of infrastructure when you look at public improvement.
Okay.
But we only looked at what the fair amount of that was for the roundabout, and so we dissected it down to two hundred and three, two hundred and three, eight fifty-three with eleven cents.
Will the city be responsible for the balance of that?
They will, they will.
They'll, they'll, they contribute their part for the construction, we're only paying two hundred and three.
In other words, they're doing the construction, and, and we're only participating with two hundred, and it is, I, I was reviewing it as it goes on, as it went on, and, and it is pretty close to a nine hundred thousand dollars worth of, of work there, in which we will only be paying two hundred thousand, and it's, the roundabout really, really serves that area so much better than a four-way stop and, and a light or anything like that.
My apologies, I read it on the inverse. Thirty percent is our responsibility.
Thirty percent or less, and so we've calculated it to be two hundred and three.
Motion to approve.
And we love roundabouts.
Yes, for you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
I abstained from that item.
Bowie Reservoir and Regional Detention Pond.
Change order number one, Bowie Reservoir, Regional Detention Pond, Devera.
Change order one consists of a, a unforeseen thirty-four inch forest main that was there from the old plant, next, we're digging out the borrow site near the Southwest Water Plant. We found that, we've estimated that there's twelve hundred linear feet, the, the change order result would increase fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars and added an additional ten calendar days. Staff recommends approval of change order number one in the amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars for a revised contract amount of three million two twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six days with an additional ten days to give us two hundred and thirty-five calendar days for the project.
Questions or not, I hear motion to approve.
Where's the location of that?
The South Water Plant, just north of there, we're digging out a reservoir or a detention pond to provide relief.
The South wastewater.
South wastewater.
And I really encourage everyone to go see it now, as it's being dug, and what they're doing, and what it will, the retention pond that, that will be created to help all of the Balboa area and everything from future flooding, it is massive. And they found this abandoned drainage line that was not in our maps, right?
Correct, sir.
It was not, it's just, it was probably sixty years old, you know, and so, obviously, it had to be removed and the whole bed, and I, I saw it, it's, they're huge pipes, so, but I, I would, I would really like for everyone to see it because, and that dirt is the one that's being.
Used for the.
Used for Bowie, for Bowie Reservoir, so we've done a, they're doing a great job, but they're doing, yeah, I, I think this is real reasonable.
So I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item C.
Mayor, item C is consideration approval, change order number one for the alley rehabilitation project, section A.
So Mayor commissioned this item, it's basically just to swap out six inches of sub base for a GeoGrid. It ends up being a minor deduct of a hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. What we're doing is trying to shallow up the debt so that we don't get, get in conflict with utility lines in the alleys as we do the alley project. Staff recommends approval of change order number one in the amount of a net deduct of a hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, and an additional seven calendar days, and we open it up for any questions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item D.
Mayor, item D is consideration approval, change order number one and final for Daffodil and Forty-first Street Drainage Improvement Project.
Mayor commissioned, the item present is a reconciliation of the final contract quantities. The payment reconstruction extended and were expanded to address areas of distress that was a cul-de-sac. When we looked at the areas we were doing near the curb line, we were gonna have cars bottoming out when they came out of their driveways, we went ahead and, and did the additional modification to make sure that there wasn't a great difference as they backed out, but this, this project budget was sufficient to cover the funds for that. The engineer record, my CIA API Civil Engineer, consulting engineer and staff recommend approval of change order number one in the net amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents with no additional calendar days for a final contract amount of a hundred and thirty-four dollars, three hundred and four, a hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents, with a final contract time of ninety days, and we open it up for any questions.
Questions?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item E.
Mayor, item E is consideration approval, contract amendment number three with Cruz Hogan Consultants for additional engineering services.
Mayor commissioned, last meeting, we brought a state letter of authority award for Tech Dot, that was to give us permission from the state to put a pedestrian underpass there at Tenth, near Wisconsin. As part of that, Tech Dot is reviewing our plans from the engineer, they've asked for a hydraulic analysis additional to what we've turned in. That additional hydraulic analysis from Cruz Hogan is for fourteen thou, would be an additional fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, and it would increase their contract amount to three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents. We recommend approval of this, and we open it up for any questions.
Was, was it known to us or Cruz Hogan of the fact that, of that additional hydraulic analysis that's being requested now as part of this change order?
No, it's, it's really not typical, but they, their engineers have reviewed this, we had a scope for them to what they were gonna do, this was a new scope that they've sent to, that Tech Dot has sent to us. It just happens as part of the review process when you're going through that. When they asked for that, I mean, it makes sense, but it wasn't, nothing from the original scope.
Says here that y'all could use it for future channel improvements, is that, is it gonna be a useful study for something in the future?
Yeah, we're gonna, they're, they're gonna give us the, the elevations, they'll look at the fifty-year and hundred-year flood checks, so it's still an analysis that, that is useful for us, and anytime it rains, it'll give us that check and give us the analysis we need, so, it's not information that's just gonna go by the wayside for us.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item F.
Mayor, item F is consideration approval, change order number six and final for the McAllen South Industrial Park Project.
Mayor commissioned, this item is change order number six, we did a reconciliation of quantities, we met with a contractor, we ended up assessing them a hundred days of liquidated damages. The net on this change order is a negative twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents for a revised contract amount of three million seven hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents, and we open it up for any questions.
So, on a change order like this, because I saw one a little bit earlier in another item, I mean, it's like a, like a refund, or you're just so reconciled?
We're spending less?
So, we won't pay them, there's a full contract amount, they won't get paid the full contract amount.
I understand.
Due to, due to their.
Because they're being paid in draws, right, as the project progresses?
Yes, sir.
But how much was the liquidated damages?
Three hundred and fifty dollars. The reason it doesn't, it won't reconcile is that we had some overages on quantities, when we reconciled, but they were charged the full one hundred days.
The, the concern, a lot of times, I have liquidated damages, but there is reason, there's no basis as, as far as thunderstorms, something.
We, we sat, we sat down and, and mediated those one hundred days.
This is a, this is a negotiated amount, there is, there is no dispute.
Excellent.
Not to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item number six.
Mayor, item number six A is consideration of adoption of an ordinance for a roundabout at Freddie Gonzalez and Thirty-third Street.
And we love him.
So move.
So I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item B.
Mayor, item six B is providing for a budget amendment for the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five Airport Improvement Projects.
Mayor commissioned, good, good evening. Staff recommends approval of the above-mentioned twenty-four twenty-five budget amendment which is requested to implement of the approved design project brought forth to the city commission through the term, approved terminal capacity study.
This is a budget amendment, so he can do what you approved on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, mayor, motion to approve.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item number seven.
Mayor, item seven is consideration of a variance request to not require subdivision process at nine point six four two acres, out of the west, ten point two five acres, Texas McAllen Railway Company survey, Hidalgo County.
This property is located on State Highway one oh seven, just east Twenty-third and west of Hidalgo Head Start Program. Property was annexed in nineteen ninety-five, a brief history on this project was, in twenty-ten, they added a rear building, and then in twenty-fourteen, they added a snow cone stand, and that's when we issued out the first conditional use permit, and of course, in fourteen, then fifteen, then we did sixteen, then eighteen, twenty-four, and twenty-five. The twenty-four, twenty-fourteen permit stated that any. Uh, the twenty-four, uh, twenty-fourteen permit, uh, stated that any additions to any of the buildings would trigger the subdivision process. In twenty-sixteen, they added a road access to the rear with forty-four storage bays for sand, caliche, and other items. Then in twenty-twenty-one, they added, uh, two food trucks, and, uh, he submitted a subdivision application May first, so he's still, he's gonna start subdivision process, but he's gonna see if you guys will give him a variance first.
Is it, is it being done already, or he already has all that stuff in there?
It's already on, in there, so it'll be going to the commis- uh, PNZ meeting of May the twentieth for pre- preliminary approval.
The financial hardship is not a consideration, right?
So staff, uh, recommends disapproval and should follow the subdivision process.
Make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for disapproval of the variance as requested.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The variance as being requested is to avoid the process only.
Correct.
Not that there's something wrong there?
No.
Yeah.
And, uh, is there anyone here? Think he's right over there.
Oh, but can they talk?
This is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, but I-
But, but it's up to the mayor?
But I think, I think the issue is, it's not subdivided, and he's doing stuff that he's not supposed to be doing, but he's already been, is doing it, but he's going through the subdivision process now. So the question is, how long does the subdivision process take, and?
At this point, it's up to his engineer and how fast he wants to fast-track it, because we have everything.
We have everything.
Well, like, we have, everything's submitted, so it's just depending on when he wants to do the infrastructure, because we have no fire hydrants or anything out there.
Well, what, with, with an approved variance, assuming to not require it, what would, what would be the motivation to continue the process?
Exactly. Well, like, right now, if we, if we do the, wouldn't do the subdivision process, then we have no access for fire hydrants if any of his buildings do catch on fire or anything like that. We have no means to put out the fire.
But assuming he wants to take that risk, what's, what's his motivation to continue the subdivision process?
We can continue, uh, expanding the, because he has almost ten acres, so he's only using about maybe four right now, so he still has all the rest of the rear property, the south portion of the property.
But you said, we don't, um-
That's the request.
That's the request, right?
His question is, there is none, because he's not, that's the whole request, is to avoid subdivision process. There won't be any motivation to continue.
Okay.
And we don't know who might be sitting up here, you said that precedent in the future for the remaining acres.
Right.
They would say, well, it's already got a variance.
Correct.
I, 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 I don't think we should give a variance at all, I think maybe just hold off on this and see if they move or not, or, it's my, my concern, if he has stuff, if he has, you said he has business in there, or?
Yes, he has a landscaping business, so he has landscaping materials, and then he has, uh, he added the snow cone stand and then two food trucks, so keeps adding.
It's in the city limits, not E.T.J.
It is in the city limits.
It is.
I think the Omar Planning Director appropriately points out, there are concern, life safety concerns, not, you know, allowing them to engage in the process, it does not allow the city to provide some regulation and oversight of development process. There, there have been a series of structures erected, um, outside of the subdivision process, um, that, that is concerning to us. Um, the, the orderly development of this process is something that the commission should consider.
And, and, and hopefully it can be expedited by then.
Exactly.
And start doing what we gotta do. Do I hear a motion to disapprove?
There was a motion.
I already have a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Future agenda items. Nothing? Okay, then we'll recess.
Oh, on, on future agenda items, I know we had done, I'm not sure if we have received anything, but on the traffic lights, given the, the level of traffic we have in the city, are we, can we get an update, are we continually doing studies, the timing changes? Do we have, do we have any, um, results after we did all the, finalized everything and installed, do we have any results that show improvement?
Yeah, we, we can get you a report on that, we have not reported that.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
But we can get you that.
Yeah, and I would really wanna see the lighting improvement on the major thoroughfares, we still have so much, so many yellow lights out there and, and not, and also, um, what do you call it, uh, not working at all, uh, that, especially on the thoroughfares, we, we really need to get it all lighted up, and get, get the white LED lights on them.
Yeah, we, we, we will continue to press, uh, that, that issue, Commissioner, and I think we had a workshop on, uh, streetlights not too long ago, but we will-
The last meeting.
Yeah, we will continue to report updates, uh, to you quarterly.
Right.
In writing, and, and at some point in the future, bring you back another workshop.
Yeah, and please not take it, and we need to.
Yeah, we should do, we need to.
Yeah.
We'll start changing them, because we got, on one of the, like, on work, Southwood Road, we got ten white and then we got twenty yellow, so, you know, we need to start changing.
Yep. But it's illuminated.
Yeah, but it's not the same thing.
It's not matching.
It's not the same.
We'll get your report on that, Mayor.
Any other item for future agenda items? Not, we'll recess into executive session.
And we're back from executive session. Councilor, what do we have?
Mayor, with regards to items 9A through 9D, I recommend the city commission entertain a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to approve action as described in executive session. And it's my understanding that Commissioner Rios is abstaining from item 9C.
Don't vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Regular city commission meetings are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Meetings are rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays on the McAllen Cable Network.
As presented in the April workshop, the city is nearing the end of its initial three-year term with Frontier Health for the direct primary care and ancillary services. The workshop highlighted key findings related to the population health, the program satisfaction, and cost analytics. These outcomes demonstrated the program's effectiveness in improving health outcomes and member satisfaction while containing costs.